Hello and welcome to the sixth annual Clare Older People's Volunteer of the Year Awards. My name is Patricia Anne Moore and I am Chairperson of Clare Older People's Council. I am emceeing this event today, our first ever online and on YouTube. And I'd like to introduce Mairead Hegarty, who will be signing this event with me today. A very warm welcome to all of our nominees today and the communities and individuals who nominated you. We'll see and hear who you are shortly on video. And by the way, the event will be available on our Facebook page afterwards. So you'll be able to see it later if you miss it now. So we're, I'm just going to say something about the shape of the event today. We're going to have a number of what we're calling ad breaks. These will give organisations who usually would be celebrating with us, a chance to say hello, remind us of their services and wish us well. We'll be introducing the nominees in groups of five alphabetically. And we'll have two sessions from our guest speaker today, Dr Harry Barry, on how to mind our mental health and build our resilience, which is such an important thing for us all at this time. After that, Pat Dialing, Chief Executive of Clare County Council, will present the award to our overall winner. He will also read a very special message of support and encouragement from Oochthron the Heron, Michael D Higgins. So, sit back and enjoy the show. We'll now have our first ad break and then we'll have our first speaker, Councillor Mary Howard, Mayor of Clare.
Hello everybody, my name is Kay Murphy and I'm the National President of Active Retirement Ireland. We are here today at our stand, which is full of information on Active Retirement Ireland. And please feel free to take whatever information leaflets you need with you. We fully support the Older People's Council and we want to wish the very, very best of luck today to all the contestants who are going forward for the Clare Volunteer of the Year Award for 2020. A different year, we know, but things change and it needs to be done. And there are wonderful people out there volunteering on an ongoing basis. Active Retirement Ireland always support the Older People's Council and we're always here for you. So enjoy your day today and the very, very best of luck, as I said already, to all the contestants taking part in this event. Bye bye now.
Good morning, everybody, Chief Executive, elected members, nominees, ladies and gentlemen. I'm delighted to join you here at this first ever virtual Clare Older People's Volunteer of the Year Award 2020. The purpose of the award is to recognise and acknowledge those older volunteers who give freely of their time, their energy and skills to help others and to enhance our communities. It was once said that the pessimist sees difficulty in every opportunity, while the optimist sees the opportunity in every difficulty. The volunteers nominated for this award have demonstrated what positivity and a sense of community can achieve. With their hard work, dedication and enthusiasm, our volunteers, our communities would be much poorer places. I want to pay tribute to our host this afternoon. The Clare Older People's Council represents the voice of older people from all walks of life, including people who are unable to take part directly in the decision-making process. In this age of rapid change in our societies, it's important that no section of our community is left behind. The Older People's Council is at the forefront of these efforts locally. On behalf of my colleagues at Clare County Council, I want to acknowledge your contribution. Finally, I want to acknowledge all of the volunteers who've been nominated for this award. You are a credit to your families and to your communities. Congratulations one and all.
My name is Sinead Tynean, I'm an Information Officer with the Citizens Information Service and I'm based in Thirlis in County Tipperary. The Citizens Information Service provides information, advice and advocacy services to the members of the public. The service is free, it's confidential and it's an independent service. So none of your information will be shared with other state agencies. Until the arrival of Covid, I would have met with members of the public on a daily basis who would have called into our office to talk about issues which are arising in their lives. Since Covid, we've been dealing with our clients through email and by telephone, mostly by telephone. And we're having, we're still very, very busy with all of the people coming in and making contact with us.
Wasn't that a great piece of music to kick off with, Anne? It's from a local album, Two Miles From Tuller, and features Leo Gavin on accordion, Mihael Rourke on fiddle and Charlie Lennon on piano. Thanks very much to Councillor Mary Howard for her remarks to formally open our event today. And now we're going to move on to our first five nominees in alphabetical order, as I mentioned earlier. And they are Anne Benson from Killaloo, Patrick Danaher, Kilrush, Anne Duggan, Kilmehal, John Durack, Bradford, Nita Enright, Quin. So that's our first five and now you're going to see them and see a little bit about the work that they've been doing in their communities.
We would like to nominate Anne Benson for the Clare Older People's Volunteer of the Year Award 2020. Anne has been an active member of our community here in Killaloo for the last 43 years as a business owner, as well as a strong supporter and active member of many local community festivals, events and initiatives. Anne would have been an original member of the Queen of the Shannon Festival, which preceded Faila Brian Baru Festival, one of Killaloo's longest running and successful festivals. Anne has served on a number of committees, including East Clare Qualtus, Clare Flakkeol Committee, who brought the County Flakkeol to Killaloo in 2014 and the Concorde Tradfest. Anne has been a huge active promoter of Irish music and set dancing, hosting a set dancing night on her premises for over 15 years, as well as many trad sessions. Anne was also involved with Darkness In To Like Killaloo Balinae Committee, helping to promote suicide awareness here in our community. Anne, as a business owner, has supported so many community groups and organisations down through the years, providing sponsorship and by running fundraising events for our local search and recovery unit, Killaloo Balinae Family Resource Centre, Baru Tree Peaks, Concorde Tradfest, just to name a few. As an individual, Anne has helped many families privately and quietly in our towns, providing support for them through difficult times. She is such an asset to our community here in Killaloo and its environment and an inspiration to us all.
Patrick was nominated for all his voluntary work on graveyards in Kilrush. He has dedicated over 10 years or more to voluntary work on the graveyards. He gives many hours repairing neglected graves, upgrading old ones, concrete works, washing and painting. He has worked long hours over the years and his work has been commended by many. His efforts may entice the younger age group to help out in their spare time. Patrick maintains a lot of graves in all three graveyards in Kilrush. In maintaining the graves, he pays for all the supplies himself. Well done, Pat.
Hi, my name is Anne Cohen. Just a quick few words to say while we've nominated Anne Duggan for Older Person of the Year. She's involved with an awful lot in the village. I have a list here that I read out because it's too numerous to remember. She's involved with the Pastoral Council, KCD, Kilmehal Active Retirement, our Christmas dinner Friday mornings, 45 Car Drive, Kilmehal Golf, DFIB, Festival of Fun, the volunteer that and our barbecue that we do every month, Bank Holiday Monday, volunteer catering for funerals, et cetera, and anything else that's to be done. The Meadows on Friday morning and the Meadow, state of work in the Meadow for Christmas, the panic and smoke alarms for the elderly. And she's also involved with Clare Vintage and the Vintage Society. And she's involved with Kilrush Golf Club as well. So she's involved in an awful lot of things and we really think that she deserves to get the award. And we'd like to wish her well, unfortunately she had an accident last Saturday where she was out delivering stuff to people involved in the Active Retirement. She fell and we'd just like to wish her well and please we'll be imploring, begging to think of her as a victim, really think that she deserves to get it. Thank you very much.
My name is PJ Mason. As a member of the Bradford community, it's a great pleasure to nominate and acknowledge John Jurick, known locally as the Duke. He has been a lifelong member of the G A club here. He has been involved as a player, selector, county board rep, club chairperson and club treasurer.
John, how long have you been involved in the club?
About 30 years, 30 years or anything along.
Yeah, yeah. And your work as treasurer has involved a lot of work on your behalf.
Yeah, I was chairman for five years.
Chairman, yeah, five years, yes.
Didn't decide, yeah.
Treasurer, yeah, yeah. So if there's a function on anywhere, you're the man with the bucket.
I'm the man with the bucket, yeah.
Yeah, good, good. And in terms of what you have done over the years then, obviously the playing pitches, the stand, all of that.
Yeah, we've done a lot of work done.
A lot of work done, yeah. Have you enjoyed doing this? You have.
I have, yeah.
Yeah. And where do you, the main benefit for you in terms of who has benefited the younger people, I guess, than the old?
Well, it's probably the young people mostly.
Yeah, yeah, the young people, yeah, yeah, yeah. That gives you a great pleasure.
It does, yeah.
Yeah. Do you ever get tired?
I do, yeah.
Do you?
I don't at the moment.
Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah. But you love what the community is about and the G A, yeah.
Yeah.
Good, good, good. And so, and your wife Marie is a great support and help to you.
She's very good as well.
Yeah, yeah, great, great. And your community here, how would you, how would you say about your community?
I'd say they're good.
Top class, yeah, yeah.
My name is Nita Enright and I live in Abbey Lucren County Clare and have done for over 50 years. I've married to Frank for 56 years who's a farmer. I've been a farmer's wife for most of that time. When I got married, like we did in the 60s, I had to leave my job and learn to live at home and make the most of it. So I was young enough then to have maybe extra time and extra energy. So I was well able to sew. I learned to sew at home. My mother was a great woman for sewing. And I had made all the children's clothes and my own clothes. And I was looking for an outlet, maybe something to do. So in the parish, the only outlet was pastoralic work. So I joined pastoralic work that time and I'm still doing it, of course, all those years later. So we sold for the missions for children's clothes and priest vestments, art of linen. And we fundraised, which was the important thing. Of pastoralic work, I went on in the earlier years to become president in the parish. And I went on to be diocesan president later. And from that, I went on to be national vice president and national president. So that took almost all my life. I went to Dublin for 18 years with pastoralic work, four times a year for 18 years. And that was something. Now, I couldn't have done any of that without the support of my husband, of course. So that was part of my, still part of my life. My other outlet then was what both of us did was dancing. And we danced all our youth because we were that generation. We set danced when we could and I was a member of Dora Bearfield Qualtus. And I went on then with a big group of people 35 years ago to start Dancing For Pleasure. And we're still dancing for pleasure every Sunday night all those years, until of course Covid has put a stop to that. Hopefully we get back to it again. But that was our outlet. Every Sunday night, we went dancing.
My name is Chief Superintendent Sean Collern and I'm the Chief Superintendent for Angarde Shia Kona here in County Clare. I just want to take this opportunity to congratulate everyone who's involved in the Older Person of the Year Award 2020 and in particular those who have received awards. So much great work is carried out by the older people in our community. And this is a fantastic event that acknowledges people who give of their time and energy and skills to enhance the community that we all live in and that we are all so proud to be part of. Angarde Shia Kona, whose mission is to keeping people safe, will continue to ensure the policing needs of the older person are met to the highest standards. You are the backbone of our society and we will always be there to offer assistance and guidance in any way we can in these very strange times. So don't ever feel afraid to contact us or to have us contacted on your behalf. And as I said, it's just an acknowledgement of everyone who was involved in this event. And I just want to say congratulations to the winners and to remember, Angarde Shia Kona is a service. Our role is keeping people safe and ye play an integral part in that. So again, thank you very much and hopefully this time next year, we'll be able to have a proper event that we'll be all able to attend and have a face-to-face and acknowledge all the winners in a much different climate than we are at the moment. Thank you very much.
So that was our first five nominees, probably quite surprised to see themselves on film today. And after our next ad break, we're going to have our first session from Dr Harry Barry, who almost needs no introduction as he's been a regular contributor to the Sean O'Rourke Programme and more recently Clare Byrne on RTE Radio. Briefly, he was a GP in practice in Drochada County Liv for nearly 40 years, but always had a particular interest in mental health. He retired from full-time practice in 2013 to focus on mental health and now works on a consultancy basis, combining writing, media and public information lectures, a bit like the talk he's going to give us today. We've got two sessions with him and he's going to talk to us firstly about our mental wellbeing and then about the steps we can take to build resistance and resilience and mitigate depression and anxiety. So we have our ad break coming up first and then I'll be looking forward to hearing Dr Harry Barry.
Welcome this morning. I'm going to do just two 15-minute really short videos for you to help you during this special day for you, Clare's Older People's Council webinar. So first thing I'd like to say to you that during this very, very difficult time of Covid, there are three kind of really risks to you. The first one is toxic stress, the second one is anxiety and the third one is depression. And I think it's kind of important really that we have a look at these three briefly for you. I think many, many people are probably feeling the symptoms of being stressed. I certainly know I am and I'm certain that you are in your particular situations. So stress is where we become really worn out by prolonged period of stress orders and Covid is providing that for us. And Covid is destroying us at the moment because firstly it's making us incredibly isolated. We don't have our normal social interactions, which we miss so much. We miss seeing our family, we miss seeing our grandchildren, we miss seeing our close friends. Then there's the fear of getting the virus all the time, this constant fear, maybe fear of getting ill, fear of dying and being buried or having to bury a loved one during these awful Covid times without the normal rituals that we find so important to us. And I know from many of you, those are issues that are really critical to you at this moment in time. If we get stressed however, it's important to recognise the symptoms. So we may notice that we're getting exhausted all the time, much tired than usual. We may find ourselves getting very, very demotivated, beginning to feel a complete lack of interest, stopping feeling enjoyment in anything. We may find ourselves struggling with sleep, maybe getting to sleep or staying asleep. We may find ourselves becoming very, very negative. We may find ourselves focusing too much in on all the negative bad news coming in all the time. We may find ourselves gradually becoming, kind of spending more and more time late in the evening. You may be browsing, maybe looking through TV, you know. So spending too much time late at night on our own, maybe not getting enough sleep. Maybe either not spending any time socialising or spending too much time on social media sites if we're into that. And I think the symptoms of anxiety, we all know, that's where we just find ourselves constantly worrying, constantly foreboding, constantly catastrophising about what might happen into the future, all the time visualising the worst case scenario. And I think the problem we are, the older we get, the more we know about how tough life can be and the more fearful we may become. And I worry a lot about this for you all at this moment in time, that many of you may be becoming a little bit fearful. And then some of you may even be getting to the point where you're getting acutely anxious, where you're getting all these physical feelings, all these heart going fast and stomach and knots and shaking and sweating and almost developing phobias. I've been contacted by some people who are struggling to leave their houses. They're finding it, they're so fearful of something happening to them, of meeting somebody and picking up this virus, that they nearly become locked into their own houses. So it's really, really important that we comment and note that. And then I think one that we have to watch for are the signs of genuine depression. Because we do know that when we get older, up into our, say, 50s, 60s onwards, even those of us who may not have suffered from depression before, may develop a condition called late onset depression, where we just notice that our mood just goes down into the ground and we struggle to get up every day. We struggle to have any interest in anything. We lose all enjoyment of everything. We may be getting a lot of self-harm thoughts, a lot of feeling of being very worthless and useless and of no value to anybody. And I think it's really important that if we're feeling these and they're going on for two, three, four weeks, five weeks, six weeks, sometimes for months, really important that we're honest with ourselves and we go and have a chat with our doctor or a close friend or somebody we can trust and open up to feeling like this because there is so much that can be done to help you if you're feeling like that. And that might be one of the most important messages of today. I think it's important that, to say from the outset, if you all obey the Covid rules, there is nothing particularly to be too anxious about in relation to this, as long as you're obeying the strict rules that were being given all the time. But within those rules, you have got to find a way to live. You've got to find a way to be able to have some form of quality of life, even though it's so difficult for all of us. But it's especially difficult sometimes in your age groups where you may be increasingly isolated. So in this talk, I want to talk just about a few important self-care items. So I think it's really important that we focus particularly on sleep. You know, we do need around eight hours sleep. And there is a myth out there that if I'm getting on in years, I can survive on four or five or six hours sleep. The reality is we can't. We continue to need eight hours sleep. So it's really important that we try to get into good habits, go to bed at the same time, get up at the same time, make sure we have blackout blinds, that our rooms are well aired, that we turn off all devices in our bedrooms, get rid of them out of our bedrooms, that we don't kind of exercise a lot short before we go to sleep, that we avoid coffee like the plague after around 12 o'clock in the middle of the day, that we don't drink a lot before we go to bed. And I think if we can obey those rules, we'll find that our sleep patterns become a lot, a lot more settled. Have a good hot bath before you go to bed. Try and voice sleeping tablets above all other things because they totally disrupt the type of sleep you get so you don't get proper quality sleep. Then I think it's really important after that that we exercise every day. And really, that might be the single most important thing after sleep for mental health. Get out every day for a minimum of 30 minutes and if possibly longer, try and go for a good long walk or whatever form of exercise you, but try and get out into the fresh air as much as possible. Because this is massive, they've shown massive effects, the older we get, that our brain really, really needs exercise and really gets tremendous positive. exercise, and really gets tremendous positive, positive effects from it, increases our endorphins, drops our stress hormones, increases our feel-good mood cables like serotonin and dopamine. So generally, very, very good for us. I think the next thing is to try to make sure we eat properly, and that means that we eat enough food, but we don't eat excess amounts of food. So it's to try to get a nice, healthy balance, that we all know what to eat. And but the difficulty is sometimes if we live on our own, we couldn't be bothered. So make the effort to make meals ahead of time, pack them away, freeze them, and make sure that you have good quality meals on a regular basis. I think really, really important that, it's very important to try and keep up your social contacts at all possible, especially with family members and neighbours, people that you know over the years. Now, obviously, face-to-face is the ideal. If you're on your own, I think face-to-face becomes really important, even if it means people coming, you know, to your garden, and you're spending, you know, you're well away from them, maybe with wearing masks and all the ordinary things. But if you're on your own, it's really important that some form of social contact be maintained. I think it's really important that, you know, that we start to learn how to use technology, as things like Zoom and Skype and all these things can be really helpful in keeping contact with families. We'll talk a little bit about technology a bit later. Really important little tip that nobody might give you, and that's to make sure that you're all taking vitamin D, the one hormone that nobody's talking about that's really, really important for our immune system and our general health. So try and make sure if your diet is reasonably good, the only hormone, or the only supplement of any note for you are maybe some vitamin B and some vitamin D, but particularly vitamin D, because it's very good for your immune system. Really important, if you're lucky enough to have somebody you love with you, and you're living maybe together on your own, really important to keep that relationship and yourself intact above all other things. Focus on those two things, and you will get through this. Really important is whether to get out of the house and get into Mother Nature as much as feasibly possible. We know that there's a lot of evidence shows that the more we spend time out in Mother Nature, and that could be out in your garden, by the way, it doesn't, it could be down to your local park. If you're lucky enough to be within range of, you know, some kind of natural amenity, like a forest or a woods, or down by a lake, or a river, or the sea, try as best you can to get out there as much as possible, because we know that this is hugely beneficial for your mental health. So both exercise and Mother Nature can go a long, long way towards keeping us well during this very, very difficult time. I think there's something I feel really, really strongly about. There are many of you who are probably living on your own. You may have lost someone you love, you may have been spending possibly years on your own. But COVID is making us even increasingly isolated. You probably were getting along fine, because you were able to go out and mix with friends and neighbours and get into hobbies and activities. But now you find yourself almost completely shut down. So I am really a great believer in what I call the buddy system. The buddy system was an idea developed in Australia for mental health amongst workers, but it's an amazingly effective regime. So the idea would be that you would create a very small contact buddy list, maybe one, two, max maybe three people, and that you would get together with these three people, either through technology, or possibly one at a time, maybe individually, but that you make a decision that during this whole period of time, that you're going to look after each other, that you're going to ring each other maybe once a day, that you're going to stay in regular, regular contact. And whenever you're feeling down, pick up the phone and ring one of your buddies. And bit by bit, you'll notice that you help each other through this time, and that will get rid of a lot of loneliness. That will give you a sense of social communication on a daily basis. If at all possible, try and meet even one of your buddies at a socially distanced level, do you know what I mean, during this period of time, even if it's only visiting each other's gardens, you know, as long as one stays well away from any kind of contact and wears masks, you know, that should be possible. So another thing that I feel very important, there's recent evidence shows that about fifty percent of people who are, say, over sixty-five, seventy, are not very au fait with technology. And that surprised me, because I do know that a lot, a lot of you have become increasingly effective with technology. But if you are struggling with this area, I think it's really important that you try to find somebody in your family, or a neighbour, or a friend, even the libraries are doing this now, to try to kind of help you to get the basics of technology, whether it's just a simple computer, even better, possibly a smartphone. And young people are brilliant at doing this. So if you have any kind of friends, or neighbours, or family who might, who might set this up for you, and maybe in a socially distanced way, show you how to manage. Because what's great about a smartphone, even though it has so many negatives for our young people, it has some great positives for your age group. And I think things like WhatsApp groups can be enormously effective, you know, where you set up a little group of maybe four or five, and you keep in regular contact with each other and look after each other on a regular basis. It also allows you to keep in contact with family over distances. And, you know, like myself, if you're struggling to see your grandchildren, it's wonderful to be able to see them even through a WhatsApp, WhatsApp line. So very, very helpful, very, very effective, and I really encourage its use. I think another thing I would really suggest is, please, 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 only get your news from a couple of trusted sources. And if we listen non-stop to negative stuff all day long, we really get very, very down, we get very anxious, we get very stressed. So I suggest maybe listening once or twice to, you know, a proper news outlet, and really switch it off after that. Because to be honest, we can get overloaded, our brains can get overloaded with bad news. And all we're hearing now is non-stop bad news, bad news, bad news. So I strongly suggest, pick a few sites and stick to them, and other than that, switch off. And I suppose my last little thing for mental wellbeing is seek out, you know, things and hobbies that give you joy and pleasure. So whatever that happens to be for you, you know, it could be sewing, it could be reading, it could be listening to music, it could be taking up a new hobby, learning how to play a musical instrument, it could be taking up a new language. It doesn't matter what it is. But it's really important that you do things that give you joy and pleasure, to take you away from this non-stop negativity. And I think it's really important for our brains, cognitively, we know that if we exercise, we eat properly, and we are socially interactive, and are cognitively active, that those four things dramatically reduce our risks of developing dementia in later life. So that's a great plus. But also, I think it helps us mentally, from a mental health point of view, if we're cognitively active on a regular basis. So I think there's plenty of there to keep you going over the whole COVID period, to try to keep your mental wellbeing well. And that's the end of part one of my discussions with you this morning. But I hope to visit you later in part two, where we're going to discuss some resilient skills to try to help you through this very difficult.
Hello, I'm Colin McGann, editor of the Clare Champion newspaper. And on behalf of everyone in here, we'd like to congratulate all the nominees and award winners at the Clare Older People of the Year Volunteer Awards for 2020. We're sorry we couldn't be there to celebrate your wins, but congratulate.
So Dr Harry Barry has given us a lot to think about in that presentation, and a lot to build on. So thank you very much indeed, Harry, for laying out the pitfalls and the problems that we might encounter, and looking forward to hearing your second presentation soon. Now, we're moving on to our second five nominees, and they are Larry Gavin from Tuller, Jacqueline McGrath Kilmehl, Evelyn Kelly from Shannon, Theresa McGrath from Ennis, and Aloma McKay from Ennis Diamond. And if I could just say, coincidence is a wonderful thing. I made a mistake in introducing the musicians from the album Two Miles From Tuller. Our first musician was actually also called Larry Gavin. And thanks to Sister Annette for phoning up and putting this right. So thanks, Sister, and I hope that's okay with you, Larry, both Lari's. So best of luck, and thank you.
This is a brief history of the Horus Mira Housing Association Tuller by Larry Gavin, former chairman of the group. During the mid nineteen nineties, the needs of senior citizens living alone in isolation in the East Clare area became a matter for debate in the Tuller area. This led to a public meeting to discuss the question. Following this, a group of local people came together to study this problem, and formed a committee to progress this matter further. Consultation with Clare County Council followed, and it became apparent that appropriate housing for senior citizens was desirable in the Tuller area. A formal body of seven people to be known as Horus Mira Housing Association was set up to continue this study. There followed a period of intense study as to how houses might be built to meet the needs of senior citizens. Various suitable sites were surveyed, and a site in the village was selected, a contractor appointed, and approval from relevant bodies obtained. Building of the houses began in 2002, and they were completed in 2003. The houses were officially opened on the eighth of set, however, 2003, by the then Minister for State at the Department of the Environment, Heritage and Law of the Government, Noel O'Hearn TD. The housing complex was blessed by the Most Reverend Willie Watch Bishop of Killaloo.
Jacqueline is friendly, pleasant, and very helpful. When she was new to Kilmehl, she came to see if she could help with the active retirement group. Straight away, she got stuck in helping with making soup and treats for the group of twenty-five on Friday mornings. After a time, she took on the secretary's role. She started up art and craft classes, which are a great success, as she is very, very talented. This happens twice per year, and she teaches people how to restore and decorate old furniture, needle felting, and decorating small old wall tiles to become teacup stands. Everyone is delighted that she chose Kilmehl, and has integrated and adjusted to her adopted community. She is like a new bright light, full of vigour and friendship. She is involved in the website and Facebook pages for the parish community. She is on the committee of Cahomurphy National School. She is also involved with the People's Park. She arranges sales of work and floral Christmas displays. She restored a statue of Mary for the local graveyard during lockdown. Any job is no problem to Jacqueline.
Evelyn Kelly, she's a member of Active Retirement with the last six years, always helpful at meetings, fundraising, organising trips. With the last six years, we have gone to day trips to Cork, Limerick, Dublin, Athlone, Galway, Adair, Donegal, and a few times to Waterford. Great family lady, helping with her grandchildren. Last year, Evelyn was diagnosed with breast cancer. She is now doing her treatment. I have no hesitation in putting Evelyn forward for this award. Thank you.
Theresa has volunteered for over fifty years in local community work, both in the town of Ennis and the wider county. Theresa and her late husband Tom have given a lot of their lives to the service of their local community by saying yes. This influence has continued with the next generation of McGraths involved in voluntary work in the community. Theresa has a firm belief in praising young people. She is involved in counselling for the Catholic Marriage Advisory Service by offering guidance to people of all ages in a non-judgmental way. She has given twenty-nine years' service to the Ladies Committee in Rice College as president, five occasions of three-year terms, motivating, fundraising, and assisting the full-time management, raising extra funds with various activities. She has been thirty years in Ennis' tidy towns, encouraging, mentoring young and mature people to take pride in their town. She looks out for older neighbours, especially during these COVID times, and also at Christmas. Well done, Theresa.
Hello, I'm Aloma McKay, and I'd like to tell you something about myself. I was born in India and grew up in Bangladesh. I have been living in Ennis Diamond for the past thirty years. I have six children, five sons and a daughter, and eleven grandchildren. My husband was American, and we moved to Ennis Diamond from Washington DC in nineteen eighty-nine. We were here only about six months when he died suddenly, leaving me with six young children to bring up on my own. This was a shock. So I had to do something to distract myself from my grief. And that's when my history of volunteering began. My neighbour introduced me to ICA, the Irish Country Women's Association. This is the largest women's organisation in Ireland. One of their main objectives is to help women realise their full potential. And I thought this was good for me, because the background I come from, men are more important than women. I'm interested in women's issues, and the Ennis Diamond Guild has donated money to Slantra Anclaw, a cancer support organisation, through our annual walk. We also have an annual sale of work in December to raise funds. And we have spent many hours making the first prize for our raffle. It could be a knitted blanket, a 3D decor pack.
Hello, everyone. It's Sean Le La Lee here from Hotel Woodstock. We would like to wish you the very best luck at the Clare Older People Volunteer Awards for 2020. We're very disappointed we're not hosting the event this year because of COVID, and hopefully we will get the opportunity to host your high-profile event in 2021.
We would like to wish all the nominees the very, very best of luck, and to say it's an amazing achievement to reach where you are today. Best of luck, a happy Christmas, and stay safe. Happy Christmas.
Bye.
So we're now going to introduce our third set of nominees, and as I mentioned earlier, they're in alphabetical order. So they are Pat O'Brien, O'Gonnell, Robyn O'Connell, Millic, Marguerite O'Keefe, Shannon, Marion Omara, Shannon, and Don Purcell from Fieker. We're going to have a look at them now on film.
Pat is a leading volunteer in the parish for many years, from painting and maintenance of one of the churches, to helping with grave digging and stewarding of traffic at funerals. These are only some aspects of his help. His major contribution would have been supplying and building a beautiful stone wall at the local church, thus providing extra car thus providing extra car parking. Pat has been a member of the parish council for several years. His primary aim would be that all decisions made would be to benefit the parish, and he is totally committed to help wherever possible. This help would include providing and cutting of timber for the annual parish auction and helping with the organisation of this event. He organises card games during the winter months, and he helps with the making and maintenance of the parish walkway. Well done, Pat.
My name is Robyn O'Connell, and my father, he was a finesman. But I was raised in Bullammealy, with three uncles, a grandfather, and a grandmother, and my mother, and my two brothers. We came in one year in holidays and we would never go back. The crack was so good above it, they were mad about us. And they had the only radio at that time in Mealy, and there'd be 50 or 60 up every Sunday listening to the match. But there was one particular day, it was an old battery radio, and Michael O'Hair said, "It's a 21-yard free now to exit." Nicky Racker bins lifts and strikes, and the minute he said strike, the old radio blew up. And there was two coming in, they were late, and my uncle said to him, "You can stay at home, Nicky Racker was after busting the radio." But anyway, I went out to Fiendsden one year when I was 16 years of age, for two weeks' holidays. And of course, the G A pitch was only across the road from where we were staying. And I went down every night training with the under-16 team. I was mad about it. And the last week, they said to me, "We're in the final next Sunday, will there be any hope to play with us?" I said, "I wouldn't mind playing with you, but would I get you into trouble?" No, I said, "See, they're all at it out this way." So we won it. They won three in a row, I was on one, and I had the medal and all. And that's when I started the quest for football.
Marguerite O'Keefe is a member of senior citizens for years. Monday and Wednesday, she bakes cakes, buns, plays cards, and relaxes with all the seniors for afternoon tea. Very involved in the apostolic work, makes cloths, knitting, crochet, fundraising, sale of work. Also very involved with the active retirement, loves her trips away. I have no hesitation in in putting Marguerite O'Keefe's name forward for this award. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Marion Omara. I live here in Shannon. I was a carer for many, many years, but I'm still caring for some of the older folks, even some of them that's in the active retirement, that I wouldn't know a lot, but I'd still drop them off a little something at the door. And anyone that would know me would know that I would help out anybody, and I even would do a bit of it around the town. We made flower beds there during Covid, and we put in the flowers. We weren't supposed to be doing anything, but we got that done too. I look forward to next year, and please God, all this Covid will be well behind us, and I hope all my age and maybe older people will be still there with the help of God.
My name is Don Purcell. I'm from a place called Fieker, County Clare. And I lost my wife some 15 years ago, or 16. And I I haven't been myself since that happened. She was a terrible loss to me. And but anyway, I'm trying to get along, and I try everything. And I have this little party. We call it "Looking Forward", and it has been a great help to me anyway.
And how long is it running?
I admit my and it is running for 15 years at the moment. But it has been there are a lot of people that come from time to time. We have dancing, slow rhythm. We have various things like that. And everything is free. It's a free night as much as we can. But yeah, there's something to look forward to, and that's what it is all about. And now since this new thing came in.
Covid?
We needed Covid, we needed worse and worse and worse. It is very lonely now all over the country, and it's very lonely anywhere. But the Remit people, they are all very lonely now.
And our final four nominees today are Asantia Sheehan from Ennis, Mary Slattery from Cratlow, Tom Stackpool from Ennis Tymon, and Fiona Ward from Killaloo. So we're going to have a look at them now again on film.
Outside of the Brownies, I've been running for over 30 years. What else? What other volunteering? I know you're in lots of volunteering.
First of all, I started as a first aid on the Red Cross. Then I went from that to Clare Care. I worked with the Archtop Special Needs. I worked with the Council for the Blinds. I volunteered in the shop. I Brownies. Got so many things.
Yeah, and we did the after all people and the Royal.
The Weir, the Heart Foundation. And I can't remember some anymore, but.
You've chosen, I choose to choose.
Oh, that's right, I worked very closely with Narinon. People, families of people that have addictions in their family. And the cancer care. What else?
I'm telling you, there's so much you can't remember.
The Archtop, I love the Archtop.
What year would you work?
I remember, I worked very, did a lot of work with St Clair's School. They worked next door to me, the turnpike, before they moved to their new school.
That's amazing.
Then St Enns, because I have a niece special needs and I'm very involved in that.
And the people around you, the people where you live.
All the people where I live respond are very, very much involved because they're slightly older than me, but more energetic than me.
I'd like to introduce you to Mary Slattery. She's our nominee for Clare Older People's Volunteer of the Year. So I'd just ask her a few questions. How long are you in Cratlow, Mary?
I'm 48 years.
And you got involved with organisations straight away?
Yes, generally I see about 12 months after coming. And I'm still a member. I've acted as treasurer and secretary for a number of times during that period, and I was also PRO.
And you do a lot of work for the church. You're a Christic minister, aren't you?
I am a Christic minister, and I.
And what does that involve then?
Well, you give out communion every so few weeks. Or you go to our local nursing home, which give communion to the patients.
Oh, right, that's good, you go to the nursing home. And what have you been doing with the active retirement? Have you had any officers there?
In the active retirement, I was secretary twice, and I have been treasurer at the moment, as well as some years back as well. So we're here about 10 years.
Oh, I remember you were the correspondent for the locality for the Clare Champion at one time, weren't you?
Yeah, I was for the Clare Champion and the leader.
Yeah. Yeah, and you're the representative then on the Community Council from active retirement.
Yes, I'm there for the Community Council, and we go there every month or whenever there's anything to be done. Now, also for the active retirement, we ran the Cancer Day for Milford Tospis for a good few years and it was a great success.
My name is Karen Harvey from Ennis Tymon G A, and I am nominating Tom Stackpool as the Clare Older People's Volunteer of the Year Award for 2020. Tom has a fantastic record of volunteerism in Clare G A and indeed Ennis Tymon G A. Tom was a founding member of our hurling club in the late 70s and has served almost every role, from chairperson to secretary. He has also worked very hard on our field committee, which incorporates the footballers and the hurlers, making sure that we have top-class facilities in terms of our G A pitch, our clubhouse, our gym facilities, our astroturf. Tom plays a key part in all of that.
I don't do much talking on it. I'm more a man of action than talk, you know what I mean? Why, I think I feel a candidate for this position. I did an awful lot of volunteer work in my time. It started off, I suppose, with G A. Actually, this year is my 52nd year in the club. And I think I held every office that the club goes through, like chairman, secretary. And I suppose the only reason I did this is I love the G A. And I love helping out the young guys. You know, I give them an active couple of hours every so often during the week.
Hi everybody, my name is Fiona Ward, and I'm a fitness instructor based in Killaloo in East Clare. I teach exercise classes in East Clare and North Tabor area. One of the areas I teach a lot of classes in is active ageing, or exercise classes for older adults. I was over 50 when I decided to train as a fitness instructor, so I was very keen to work in this area to promote health and fitness among our older population as we age. During lockdown, obviously my classes all came to an end. I decided to try and reach out to my clients. I made some videos, sent the videos out. I sent information sheets, exercise sheets. But I realised that that didn't quite fill the void that the classes left behind. One of the great things about older adult exercise classes is the social aspect. It's people getting to meet one another. It's the weekly routine as well as exercising together. So I decided to take my classes online, and I chose Zoom. I offered three classes a week. The classes were free, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, the same time every week, and it just allowed people to connect. It allowed people to meet one another. A lot of my clients were living alone, they were cocooning, and suddenly they could meet up online. We'd have a little chat before the class. We'd have our exercise class, we'd say our goodbyes, and we could meet up again at the next class. Attendance was really good. Some people attended three classes a week. Classes ran from April through May, June, and into July. And it's something I'm really glad that I was able to do for my community. I'm also a volunteer run director with my local Park Run. Park Run is an amazing initiative, a really great community event, a weekly 5K walk or run timed, and it's a great way to meet other people in the community as well.
So that wraps up all of the film and presentation of our nominees today. And I think we can feel the excitement mounting. But before we go to our final award, we're going to hear again from Dr Harry Barry, this time talking about how we can build our resilience and manage our mental health.
Good, this is Dr Harry Barry back again to talk to you this afternoon about the whole world of emotional resilience. And emotional resilience is something that I'm passionate about, and I feel it's the one thing that's probably going to help us to survive during this difficult period of time. And emotional resilience is not just for your age group, it's for all age groups. You know, I think that's important. So what is emotional resilience? Well, emotional resilience is our ability to cope with the slings and arrows of life, all the things that life throws at us. They affect us deeply emotionally, and it's basically how do we handle that? How do we cope with it? And I've always believed that all of us have an innate ability to learn and develop these skills. There's many, many people who believe that emotional resilience is only present in some people and other people don't have it. Whereas I believe it's a series of skills that we can all learn and develop. So of all the groups that I talked to, I would say I'm probably talking to the most resilient group. I'm sure there are many of you who would very, very quickly say, "But you know, I think I'm very, very resilient. I had to cope with lots and lots of things in life." And I absolutely agree with you. But this Covid is different. This is not anything that any of us have really come across before, and it is creating, I think, particular difficulties that are challenging our resilience. So I'm going to give you a couple of exercises to do now over this period, and we'll see if we can assist you to kind of improve your resilience. So the first thing I'm going to talk about is is the whole world of uncertainty. Because the bottom line is that of all of the, I suppose, things that Covid is doing to us, uncertainty is probably the greatest. Because you're all used to uncertainty. People of your age group have dealt with uncertainty your whole life. But there's a level of uncertainty here that's possibly the only time in the last 100 years that we've had anything like that, is perhaps the World Wars, you know, where there was that level of uncertainty. But I think the uncertainty in your case is all about, I can't control what's going to happen. I have no idea how long this is going to go on for. I have no idea whether I'll be able to survive it. Will my family make it? Will I get for you? Will my family get ill? Will I be able to cope? Will I survive this period of time? But most of all, when will a vaccine come? Will there be a vaccine? What will happen if something happens to me before I get a vaccine? What happens if I get sick from something else? So this level of uncertainty is massive. But when we get uncertain, we're in a time to get incredibly anxious. And so anxiety and uncertainty go hand in hand, or we get very frustrated, which we'll talk about later. So when we get very anxious, of course, what we're actually trying to do is we're trying to control things in life. So we believe that we should be able to control the big things in life, i.e. everything with this Covid, because we actually begin to believe that we control all the little things in life. So I'm going to give you a really interesting little exercise to do, which you'll find very, very challenging if you do. But if you do it, you'll notice that you become better at coping with uncertainty. Because you see, life is all about really percentages. That it's all about what percentage chance is there that something will and won't happen in life. And when we're actually very anxious or very frustrated, we're usually looking for absolute certainty. We want 100% certainty. We want absolute control. So to get rid of that, I want you to do the following exercise. I'm going to list off a number of things, or I want you to list off, sorry, a number of things that you really enjoy doing every day. So let's write them down. You might like watching Netflix, you might like watching particular soaps, you might like watching certain documentaries, you might like looking at sports programmes, you might like reading, or a certain kind of music, or certain kinds of cooking, or you might like doing yoga or pilates, you might like going for a brisk walk every day. You know, all of us will have things that we really enjoy doing every day. It might be that glass of wine with our meals. And one little tip, by the way, which I probably should have added in your previous discussion, is watch alcohol, because alcohol can be a bad enemy. If we start to rely too much on alcohol, especially when we get older, our brains just don't cope with all well with it, and we become increasingly anxious and increasingly down. But anyways, suppose you just like an occasional glass of wine or a glass of beer, or a glass of Guinness or whatever, witcher meals, or in the evening times or whatever like that. That might be something that you might put down. So I assume you've put about five to 10 items down. So what I want you to do is I want you to get a coin. On one side of a coin is heads, and the other side of the coin is tails. Heads means yes, and tails means no. So for four weeks, every solitary episode of everything you want to watch, every soap you want to watch, every programme you want to watch, every football thing you want to watch, you have to toss a coin. Heads, you can watch it, tails, you miss it, and you can't watch it in repeat. So you get very anxious before and very frustrated afterwards. Now, that'll drive people absolutely nuts. So you get very anxious before and very frustrated afterwards. Now that will drive people absolutely nuts. So every time you want to go for a walk, heads, you can walk as fast as you want, tails, you have to walk like a snail. Heads, every time I want to do some cooking, heads, I can cook something I like, tails, I can cook something I hate and have to eat it. Heads, I can read for the day, tails, I have to put the book away. Heads, I can listen to music I like, tails, I have to listen to music I hate and so on. The whole idea is that you pick around five to ten items that really you enjoy doing every day and you have to toss your coin day after day after day. I guarantee you it will drive you absolutely stark, raving mad. And most people become so irritated with it that after a week they throw it in. But the whole point of this is that it's there for the long haul because this uncertainty is not going to be gone in a week. It's going to take perhaps up to a year to eighteen months for this to resolve itself. So I think it's really important that we learn to cope with uncertainty. And the whole idea is that if I can learn to live with uncertainty in little things, I can learn to live with uncertainty in big things. The second exercise I want to do is I want to go through the world of unconditional self-acceptance. Possibly the most important thing in mental health. I think some of you are very good at this, but some of you may not be so good. So what I want you to do, another exercise, I want you to draw a line between one and a hundred. At one end put one and at the other end put a hundred. One means that you're fantastic, or one means that you're terrible, you're crap, and a hundred means you're fantastic. And I want you then to rate yourself as a person between one and a hundred. So just keep yourself a rating. This is your chance to put yourself up there. Now I want you to rate between one and a hundred, where do other people rate you as a person? Of course they rate me really high. Now I'm going to ask you a few questions. Word goes out that you're a very poor parent or have been a very poor parent. Where would you rate yourself then? And where would other people rate you? Or word goes out that you're not coping at all well with COVID. Where would you rate yourself then and where would other people rate you? Or let's give you, you're diagnosed with depression and put on medication and word goes out that this has happened. Where would you rate yourself then and where would other people rate you? So we could go on. I could also give you something positive. It could be that word goes out that you're a fantastic gardener and your garden is fantastic. So where would you rate yourself then? And where would other people rate you? And I guarantee you, if you were all being honest, you'll notice that your rating went up or down depending on what question I asked you. And that's the real problem in mental health, that we merge who we are with what we do. So if we're successful at something, we think we're great. And if we fail at something, we think we're failures and we rate ourselves down. So our sense of who we are becomes enmeshed with, unfortunately, what we do in all areas of life. And that's why our young people are struggling so much because their world is totally dependent on whether their social media is going up or down. But we, the adults, play this game as well. And we can be very good at saying, well, if everybody thinks my family have done great in life, then I feel great. And if people, if I feel my family didn't do so well, then I rate myself down and so on. We can play this game ad nauseam. So I want you to develop unconditional self-acceptance, the most wonderful skill of all. To develop that, I'd like you to be a member of a club where there are three rules. Rule number one, you're not allowed to rate yourself as a person. Number two, you're not allowed to accept anyone else's rating of you as a person, which gets rid of shame. And number three, you're entitled to rate your behaviour, your actions, your skills, your talents, but not yourself. So what we mean by this, you accept yourself as a wonderfully unique, special individual person that you are. Because none of us can be rated against each other. We're all completely different and unique and very special. So be, learn to be kind to yourself, to accept yourself, to not be putting pressure on yourself. And accept that failure is part of life. You all know that better than so many of our young people. We all fail in life. It's part of life. And I think if we can learn to accept ourselves, but take responsibility for our actions, and I think we're pretty good at that. And I think your age groups are very good at that, but it's a really important thing to learn to accept yourself, be kind to yourself, irrespective of whether things are going well or not going well. Another very important exercise is to develop what we call a way of handling frustration. Because frustration is the great unmanaged emotion. Frustration is where we feel the world should change to suit us. Some people will get very anxious when they're put in these situations. Some people get very irritable and frustrated. So if you find that you're all the time looking for the quick fix, that you're trying to dodge the discomfort part of life. If you find that you're all the time annoyed if things are not working out the way you want them to be because that's not the way life should be. You'll find you get very stressed and you get very down. So here's three questions that I would suggest you use anytime you're getting really frustrated about something. Just ask three questions. What is my long-term goal in this situation? What short-term pain am I trying to avoid in this situation? And what changes in my thinking and behaviour do I need to make to sort out this situation? And you'll notice that very quickly, when you do this on paper, you start to find out very quickly that you're all the time trying to dodge something. You're trying to dodge the discomfort of something, maybe that difficult conversation. Maybe having to accept things, that's something that I think particularly as we get older, we get better at doing, but sometimes we don't. Sometimes we have to accept that the situation is the way it is and that we can't change it. So we have to learn to come to accept that situation. So I think a really important thing to learn and cope with frustration. I think another very important, quick comment on flooding. Anybody who's struggling there with acute anxiety, where they're getting constantly anxious all the time, acutely, or where they're suffering from phobias, wonderful exercise called flooding, where we learn to accept that the physical symptoms of anxiety are uncomfortable, but they're not dangerous. There's no danger. They're simply all caused by an adrenaline rush in the body. That's all that's causing them. There's absolutely no danger, but they're incredibly uncomfortable. So a lovely skill is to learn the skill of learning to, if you get these, to visualise that you're stuck to the seat and allow them to flow over you, almost like a wave. We call this flooding. And this has the incredible effect in your emotional brain of changing your emotional brain's memory. And if you learn to go with these physical symptoms, which normally last for around five to 10 minutes during a panic attack or a phobia, for example, you'll notice that very quickly you become, your brain becomes more adjusted to them and you start to get less and less of them. So by using flooding on a continuous basis, I find we can get rid of panic attacks and all phobias very, very, very quickly. But you really have to practise that. And I might give you a website where you might look at that if you want more information on that. Another great exercise is empathy. And I think empathy is one of those really important exercises. I think some people are really good at empathy and some people are not. And my God, we're going to need a lot of empathy with each other. Empathy is the ability to see into the heart and mind of another person. And we all know, we all know people who emotionally seem to have no empathy and other people who seem to have great empathy. But we can all develop our empathy skills. So if you're struggling with empathy, usually that's emotional empathy you're struggling with. Then what I suggest, spend four to six weeks, if you are out and about, if you are in the supermarket or if you have a chance to watch any kind of social interactions going on, then just watch what happens when people behave in such a way that they shut people down. When people start to tell them about something and that's emotional to them and they shut it down. And you see the person wilting in front of you. And then watch and see where a person listens carefully and is obviously emotionally nuanced and tries to sense where the other person's at emotionally and see how they blossom. And then put that into practice in your life. Spend more time listening, spend more time being quiet, spend more time trying to sense where another person's at. And you'll notice that bit by bit you get better and better at it. And if you can become emotionally empathetic with all those you come in contact with, it'll help you greatly during this period of time. I think there is lots and lots of other, I love a three-minute mindfulness-based exercise, which I think you should all do maybe once or twice a day. Just spend one minute focusing simply on the thoughts in your head. Spend one minute focusing on your breathing. Don't try and change it in any way. And spend one minute focusing on your right arm, your right leg, your left arm, your left leg. To do that, maybe for three minutes, twice a day, that can be enormously helpful during this period of time. So they're just a selection of some tips for you. If you're interested in learning anything else, you can see my book, My Book in Motion Resilience. And also my website is drharrybarry.com, which has videos on how to deal with panic attacks and phobias and depression. And also you may be able to get contact with some of the books if you're struggling to get them. But they're all available in most of the bookshops. So it's been an absolute pleasure being with you today and I wish you all the best for the rest of the day.
There's a lot to think about there and even better, a lot we can put into practice in our everyday lives to guard against depression and anxiety taking hold. I'd like to thank Dr Harry Barry on behalf of Clare OPC for giving us his time and expertise today. Now we're nearly there, the big moment, the award itself. We have had tremendous support from Clare County Council, in particular from our age-friendly coordinator Karen Fennessy and her colleague Helen Maloney in setting this event up today. We are now delighted to welcome the chief executive of Clare County Council, Pat Dialling, who's going to present the nominees with a framed certificate. And he will present the overall winner with the trophy and the prize for Clare Older People's Volunteer of the Year. Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, Patricia. Thank you very much and hello everybody. And for me, I do these type of engagements with people and groups all the time now. And can I just say one thing? While it's great to meet you all in this different type of an environment, it does not substitute for meeting each other. You'll all recall last year when we had our afternoon together, we shared some food. We had a good time, we told a few jokes and then certain people received their awards and there was the overall award as well. So just to say that I look forward to getting back to a situation where we can all meet again. COVID has taught us many things and I'd like particularly to thank Patricia and her colleagues in the Older People's Council in Clare. Also the members of the Age Friendly Alliance in the county for the way they've shown leadership and example over the past 10 months. There is no doubt that older people have shown incredible resilience during these difficult months. And they have clearly shown that while you cannot direct the wind, we can together adjust the sails. And I think that is what the older people have helped us all to do. They have shown example to everybody and younger people about how to be resilient, how to comply and how to adhere to the guidelines. And I think that's a lesson for us all. Also, the older people in County Clare have shown positivity. And our engagement with them has always been, we've been through tough times before and we'll come through these tough times again. And I think that's an important message for us all as we hear the media today again talking about certain things. The older people, I suppose in youth you learn, but in age you understand. And I think that's clearly the case. So congratulations to each and every one of you. I think you should all be very proud of what we've achieved in a very difficult time. And as I say, I look forward to next year getting back to shaking hands, hugging each other, having a cup of tea and a bit of lunch and doing it the way we know how to do it best. So thank you very much, everybody. I now would like to formally present the certificates and as much as one can present them in this format. So Karen will give me a certificate here. Clare Older People's Volunteer of the Year Award 2020. This happens to be for Don Purcell, whom I believe I hear is of elderly, elderly years and is doing very well and as active as ever and has shown that example, that resilience and that positivity I spoke about earlier on. So well done to Don Purcell and the nineteen recipients of the awards for 2020. Congratulations one and all. Now, the next thing I have to do is to read a letter from the President, Ucraun Haeran, President of Ireland, which has been sent, and I'll put on my glasses, that's okay, which has been sent as a message from the President to wishing us all well at the Clare Older People's Volunteer Award. I wish to express my gratitude to you for the greatly generous contribution you are making to our society during this difficult time. I have, as President, been very inspired by the many imaginative and thoughtful ways in which community connections and vital assistance and support have been maintained and extended within our society as we face collectively the unprecedented challenge of COVID-19. Throughout this time, we have witnessed the contributions of senior citizens who have given so generously of their time to support those who are isolated, offer care and assistance to vulnerable neighbours and in so many other ways have demonstrated the spirit of active participation that is so vital to the building of sustainable communities. I thank each and every one of you for the compassion and hand of friendship you are extending to your fellow citizens as we confront the many demanding challenges of this contemporary moment. It is such acts of solidarity that will ensure that together we can navigate our way safely towards a shared and brighter future. I wish to congratulate you all on receiving this well-deserved accolade. Gure Milla Mahagwev Goleer, Michael D Higgins, Ucraun Haeran, President of Ireland. So that is a great honour for us to receive that in the county and to wish each and all of you very well. And we have a framed copy of this letter from Ucraun Haeran for all the recipients of the awards also for you to have and be proud of that was given to us on this important day. Okay, thanks Karen. Okay, I feel like I'm at the Oscars and the gold envelope is being handed to me. Here it is. And this is to announce the winner of the Clare Older People's Volunteer of the Year Award 2020. And I'm delighted to say that the winner in 2020 is Mary Slattery. I can hear the boule de basse. Everybody's clapping in their living rooms. So well done, Mary. Huge congratulations. And just to show you what you will be holding, and I look forward to when we can hold it together sometime next year to commemorate your award. But that is your award, Mary. Huge congratulations for all your work. Truly deserved. And I know all your community, your neighbours, your family, your friends know it's well deserved. And it sure is, Mary. So congratulations to Mary and to all the participants here today.
I'm delighted to win this lovely trophy. I wish to thank the Clare Older People's Council, the Clare County Council and Noel Donahoe and Crathlo Active Retirement for nominating me for this lovely trophy.
Just to echo the congratulations of Pat Dialling, warmest congratulations to our overall winner, Mary Slattery from Crathlo today, and well done to all of our nominees. I'd like to thank all of the following who gave their time to be with us today. Councillor Mary Howard, Mayor of Clare, Pat Dialling, Chief Executive, Clare County Council and all of my colleagues on Clare Older People's Council. and all of my colleagues on Clare Older Peoples' Council and especially Eugene Phillips. I'd particularly like to thank our adjudicators for the great job they did. And they were councillor Johnny Flynn, Marie Slattery, formerly of Shannon Heritage, and John Hare of Drumoland. I'd just like to finish with a poem that I think has become very well-known during this time of COVID. And I think it's a nice uplifting note to end our celebrations today on. So it's called 'Everything is Going to Be All Right', and it's by the poet Derek Mahon, who sadly left us this year. How should I not be glad to contemplate the clouds clearing beyond the dormer window and a high tide reflected on the ceiling? There will be dying, there will be dying, but there is no need to go into that. The poems flow from the heart unbidden and the hidden source is the watchful heart. The sun rises in spite of everything and the far cities are beautiful and bright. I lie here in a riot of sunlight, watching the day break and the clouds flying. Everything is going to be all right. Thank you.